We call this city council meeting for the city of Yamhill to order Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty five at six thirty one P M. We have a roll call, please.
Ken's here.
Brothers and I are here.
Askie, Askie here.
Aaron here.
Corrigan here. We'll all rise for the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all. Automation under God, it says on the transcript.
Sounds like a.
Then you need to end that speaking better.
I know, right?
Like a metallic album.
C H in the back row.
Yeah.
All right, so public comment is next. Yamhill encourages all citizens to comment on any city business. This is not a dialogue platform. Comment shall be limited to three minutes. And if you wanted special accommodation or additional time, you should have already called Angie at the city hall. Bob Davis is the only name on the list. Want to talk, Bob?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, councilmen, councilwomen, councilpeople. Robert Davis, two one two North Maple Street. I wanted to address the draft issue that is in the packet under City of Yamhill Rules of Procedure for City Council and Meetings, specifically under item. Well. Item. Six. Paragraph D. It says, and I quote. Public comment will be reserved every regular meeting of the council. Each period shall not exceed a maximum of thirty minutes unless majority one majority, yes, of councillors present vote, extend the time, subject to the limitations contained in subject H five E of this section for the the period for public comment shall be in regard to items placed on the agenda other than public hearings and or any issue of city business. Well, I'm sorry. Isn't the agenda part of city business? So it seems like it's kind of saying one thing and saying another. You can you can allow a comment on the agenda, but you can't have conversation about any issues of city business. It's like, what? So that's the first item. And the last item under number seven in that same paragraph. Speakers must provide materials in readable format to the city recorder at least seven days prior to meeting so that they may be provided to the council in advance. So let me ask you. If this and the agenda, which this isn't, but if the agenda comes out and the packet comes out three days before this meeting. How are we supposed to on our side respond to anything that's in the agenda or in the packet seven days prior to the the meeting? I don't get it.
So really, I mean, normally we don't have a question and answer, but just to real fast on that, that would be if you were presenting something where you had handouts. Those all have to be turned in one week in advance. That goes for councillors and the mayor.
So what if my so what if my conversation of my three minutes includes handouts? How would I get that into without seeing the agenda first, without seeing the packet first? You see?
You wouldn't be able to do handouts the same way that I can't do handouts tonight on the stuff that I had that came in late because it's not the way that.
I'm I'm not talking coming up late. I'm talking about trying to address things that are actually on the agenda that's in the packet tonight. How would you address that seven days advance when the packet and the agenda only comes out three days before the meeting?
Seven days advance to put it on the agenda. Do you see how that is an endless loop?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I do. It's it's, yeah, it's definitely a catch twenty two, but I figured I'd.
But so those are not. So those are for discussion tonight. Those aren't approved. That's nothing that council said. Yes, that's what we're doing.
That's why.
But I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and we'll make sure that we pay attention to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda updates or additions? Do you have any? Oh, we we didn't ask if there was anybody online that wanted to have public comments. Sorry.
I only have Jenny Morrison and she's going to speak.
And so I think what I'll do with before moving on actually to the updates. I think since we had mail correspondence, I will just read the mail correspondence that we received. So this was hand delivered from my seven year old neighbor. It's from Olivia Ling and Danielle Finley and the most beautiful handwriting from a seven year old I've ever seen. And I'm very happy. This is the best letter I've gotten as mayor. And it says, Dear Mayor, we should have a skate park and more bark chips at Beulah Park. Love, Olivia Ling and Danielle Finley. And I couldn't agree more. I think that's something we should look into. So I think we could probably check with the community club to see about some bark does or bark chips. And maybe we can you know, somebody in council wants to volunteer and help out too. We can maybe have a meeting with Olivia and Danielle and Jim Phillips and see if we can decide on some good barge. Because I don't know what constitutes good bar chips, but I'm a little.
Exotic.
Yes. Anyway, I think that's cool. And I think that we should help Miss Olivia. And what that will move on to agenda updates or additions.
I don't have any updates or additions.
Cool. That moves us on to the ordinance reading. So this would be the second reading of D O two five dot zero three ordinance five six, five four six, an ordinance amending Yamhill Municipal Code. Section one point one six dot zero two zero relating to membership of the City of Yamhill Planning Commission. And so the second reading is just that. It's the ordinance D O two five dot zero three and ordinance amending Yamhill Municipal Code, section one point one six zero two zero relating to membership of the City of Yamhill Planning Commission and declaring an emergency. We want to have a vote on the second reading.
It's vote.
Do we need to have discussion before we go?
Why? Everyone's so quiet.
Sorry, I was rereading it again.
Yeah.
I read it an hour ago, but I'm still rereading it again.
Maybe I'll give my best explanation as well.
Is this, were we just changing it from not more than one to not more than two?
Yeah. Yeah, so this would this would allow council to choose a person outside of the city limits within, I believe it's five miles of the city, but must reside in the same zip code to serve on the planning commission. And the purpose for that is is we had received no response for planning commission for quite a long, long period of time. And we were running at a point where we had, if one planning commissioner did not show up, we would have had not had quorum. Which would not be ideal in a land use hearing situation because that puts the city in a situation where we could actually find yourself on the wrong end of a lube suit for not being prepared. That doesn't mean we have to do that. It just gives council the ability to do that. Council also has the ability to remove a person from planning commission for multiple different reasons. Some of the concerns had been somebody from outside the city may not have the city's best interest in mind. Although my personal opinion is is that we have lots and lots of really great people that love this town and live just a couple of miles outside of the city limits and they'd like to have, you know, an ability to serve their city as well. So that's my two cents. I had the lobby.
Thank you. And regardless of where you live, like within city limits or outside, I would hope that the planning commission would bring to our attention if there was someone that didn't have the city's best interests.
I believe that that would be quite evident quite quickly. And I also think that our city planner would probably be calling that alarm quite quite rapidly if there was some shenanigans.
And they do have to follow the the ordinance of the city.
Right. They have to follow code and criteria for the city of Yamhill. And if they don't, that becomes a giant problem for them. So back to the vote.
We're going to start. You're on the far left.
We don't need a motion because it's the second reading. So we've already received a motion.
Or I can start.
But because we weren't unanimous last time, we had to have a second reading, which would require a second vote. So I would believe this passes if it is the majority.
Majority.
It does not need to be unanimous.
So alphabetical, Askie I.
Okay.
It's a beer.
That's you.
It's you.
Brothers and I.
Hi.
And I.
Aaron A.
And Corrigan, I. So that is passed. So ordinance five forty six and with the emergency clause, which I'll just read out loud into the record is the city council of the city of Yamhill deems it necessary for the preservation of health, peace and safety of the city of Yamhill that this ordinance take effect at once. And therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist. And this ordinance shall be in full force and in effect from and after its passage and approved by the mayor. And there's a place for me to sign, which I will do directly after the meeting. So thank you, everybody. And consent agenda. I'm sure everybody's looked that over and can we motion?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
My second motion.
My vote.
And I.
Brothers and I.
Askie I.
Aaron I.
Corrigan I. All right, so department reports. So city administrator report. Kind of cool. I started working with Kit Johnson, County Commissioner on the gravel lot next door. He's put us in touch with the county's legal counsel on what options we have to expand the M A U online space.
The what?
The minimum understanding of space next door, what we can do with it and how it can become the cities potentially at some point and what the sort of pitfalls might be. So that was nice of him. So we took a tour of the water plant. Kyle and Jason, Pam Kersh and I, we inspected the new intake screens. Or where the screens will eventually go and discuss the payment with the contractor and engineer. Met with Mr. Davis and Rocky Lawson yesterday for turned into a Q and A that Bob unfortunately didn't get a finish participating in. So Bob, sorry for that. Next time you should go first. Met with councillor Perrin a couple of times over the month to discuss city matters for the newsletter, bus stops, other issues involving the police. Councillor Askie and I spent an evening in Newburgh last week for the city county dinner, which was really cool. And when we do our next city county dinner, we should model it much like theirs was the best. Was less pomp and circumstance and a lot of opportunity to discuss and meet. And we made a lot of new contacts that night. So it was very good. Then we emailed and met in person with Arthur Chaplet with Business Oregon on FEMA grant. We, with the government shutdown, the time had expired on our matching money for the three hundred fifty thousand dollars on the water tank. And within twenty four hours, Arthur was able to get that back on for us. So that was very good. And then we also got to meet I say we because somebody who's with me, well, Beth Whitowski from the governor's office. So we have some opportunities to have some interroads actually with the governor on some issues that we may have in the future. And then tomorrow we have a regional water solution meeting in Lafayette with Nittleamidaw, with Nittleamidaw and Council of Government and mayors from some other cities and public works, I suppose.
And that's what. Something else tomorrow too.
Yes, tomorrow night is Juliet's House Award Ceremonies.
I was thinking of the thing I emailed you about, mass if you were going.
Oh, the small cities. That's that's tomorrow after this meeting. So there's two meetings in Lafayette, right? Sort of. Are you going to either of those?
I don't know. I have to look.
We'll have to talk about.
I'm not signed up for it.
You should go.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does Kit have the ability to get us the core samples they took on that property?
I can get those through. I'm sure legal has those. Yeah, D Q, but I'm sure.
Just as long as they can free them up so we can actually get those core samples.
That would definitely be something we do. So the financial report that came in from our finance manager, everybody have a chance to look that over? Kind of cool. We should be getting those numbers back any day now for the for our budget forecast. So moving on from there, we have the police department. Chief Graven was not feeling terribly great tonight, and he has been working a lot of hours. And so I thought best that he take instead of sitting for this meeting, time to rest. He has to work tomorrow. Did everybody have a chance to look over the email that he sent us on the stats? Do you have any questions or? Just for public record. Last month, numbers call and activity was one hundred and thirty nine. Case reports, seven. Four arrests were made. Court citations, twenty three. Warnings, fifty four. Circuit court citations, three. Citizen calls for service, fifty five. And officer initiated contacts were sixty six. Chief had worked two hundred and twenty five hours. Travis Van Cleve, zero hours. Chris Livingston, one hundred and fifty four hours. And Andrew McCullen, who is starting his F TAP training has listed at zero, but he was here more than that. So then Chief drove one thousand one hundred and eighty four miles. Officer or Corporal Van Cleve, zero miles. S R Livingston, one thousand one hundred and ninety six miles. They have competition going. And Andrew's probably not allowed to drive just yet. So zero miles for him. And public works. Jason, you're out.
Yeah, hopefully everybody got a chance to look at that T M L D, T M D L report. Do you guys have any questions with that? So within the matrix, we're working with D Q now to kind of solve some of this. So every biannually, I'm supposed to like report to you guys what we've been doing. Obviously, we've been doing the street city sweeping. We're doing storm projects. We're actually finishing up Cedar next week. That'll be the last part of that, the last phase of that. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. We have to keep it posted. We have to do updates and links to our C C R. Describe our efforts and collaborate with the watershed council, update milestones to accurately cross reference strategies. We do an annual report of erosion control and post construction implement and development. So that's more of a less a Cecil thing that we deal with on new construction. Annually report interim findings and determine if design standards should be adopted for any partial requirements. So that's all within that matrix you guys are looking at. So there's no questions with that. I'll just kind of go into projects. We finished up with the disinfection room. It's currently going to be put online next week. We're doing operations and maintenance to all of our pumps with Xylem out of Portland. We did find one issue with one pump that we purchased last year. That's going to be replaced with a new pump. Ellie's Garden is completed. That whole lift station's been upgraded.
Yep. That's been a minute.
Yeah, it's sure has. We found the right contractor, did great work. It's all epoxy coated, new stand pipes.
What does that change?
I and I, influence infiltration. We had quite a bit. I think they were saying probably around one hundred and seventy three gallons per minute of I and I. And mostly was due to malfunction within the stand pipes. So basically those pumps were pumping up, dumping back in.
Oh, man.
Yeah. So we got that all fixed. You corrected. We also corrected the manhole on on creek, the one that was in in the physical creek. We got all that completed and done. Like I just mentioned, we're doing a Cedar Street storm improvement on with Hallworth Construction. They were a low bid. Legacy's already done three quarters of the paving on that road. So the last quarter of road will be completed this next week. We are putting an insert valve in. So that's an actual live valve. So we don't have to shut down water on our main line to be able to isolate between the reservoir and the water plant. I don't know if a lot of you guys know the backstory there. We had a major leak. We had to cut the pipe open. We had no isolation valves in between. So we lost roughly around two hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water during a grotton. So what we've been doing every year is implementing these insert valves. We put in four last year, putting in one this year. We put in three before that. So we've pretty much isolated our whole system trouble points. Right now, we're going into bids next week for Olive and Camilla Street, the new water line going in, the distribution line. Costs are roughly looking at two hundred thousand. We don't know yet. That's just estimated guestimation. We're going to be hopefully with what we have in the C I P and what we have budgeted, we'll be able to do two C I P projects. So obviously all of Camilla and then hopefully all of Dahlia. So that'll be all in a loop system. Because right now we'll be isolate off, isolate off Highway forty seven. Forty seven is not on a loop. So we lose like six houses lose water. So they're offline. Yeah, that's pretty much the major stuff right there.
Let's go put a question. This has nothing to do with that. So when they improved Azalea, when they did this parking lot behind the school and forty seven and all that. They put a drain, a big drain right there on the corner of Azalea and Maple. And it's on the bank side. But when they put that in, when the water runs down Azalea, it bypasses that drain. Is there any way of
Yeah, we.
Doing anything to make it so that water goes into the drain?
Yeah, shave down the actual asphalt. We can just put curb and gutter in. That creates like a catchall. So you're not just having it.
Because it goes right into, you know, right on it, bypasses the gutter and goes right out onto forty seven or Maple, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty simple fix, Patty.
Really?
Yeah, just wasn't on the radar. So now that it is.
I mean, it doesn't bother. It doesn't bother us over, you know, our house, but it's just odd how they didn't do that right.
Yeah, I mean, if it did just simple mechanics or surveying, but we'll we'll implement something that'll catch.
I think it would be beneficial to go in the drain and not.
Right. And that's part of our T M D, T M D L.
Just point of emphasis is the where the trees are in that where there was, like, there's no ditch there. There's trees in the right away.
No, there's no trees. It's bushes, but it's up on the, you know, where the bank is. You know, where it runs right next to it. There's a, there's a big gutter or drain right there on the corner, just before just before the street or just before the sidewalk on Maple.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's on the bank side.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have one last thing. We will be doing a road repair on Third Street, West Third Street. So that project will be completed. I know most of you guys saw the paving that was done partially. And then we did a T cut after the distribution line, but that will be completely new road on West Third all the way through.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Was there, is there anything for city staff report that you just wanted to add?
It didn't include a paper report in the packet. If anybody has questions about that, I'd be happily try to answer them for you.
I just noticed that I kind of moved past that. I didn't want to not give people opportunity if they had questions. Everybody's good? All right, moving along. So Jason, you can stay or you can go if you would like.
Yeah.
Planning Commission. Sean was not able to attend this evening. And he did include his report in I mean, was sent out by email to everybody.
I guess I sent it out to email and I included paper copies as well. He just wasn't able to get it done in time for the package.
Did anybody have any questions on the reporter?
I think I missed it.
It was sort of mostly just a review of last month's meeting.
Isn't it this that she, isn't it this?
The handout?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
I think I included it in a Google Drive as well.
We can skip by that as we're looking at that and come back to it if you'd like. We do have Jenny Morrison online, who was, I guess, I'd be giving a report for the Economic Development Committee.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
That's fine.
All right. Sorry, I can't be there in person. The Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, the fourth. And we had a really excellent meeting. We had Mayor Corrigan in attendance and it was a very productive discussion. We talked about the design code recommendations that we had put together and what the planning commission's response was to that. And we have next steps for that. And so first up is there's some information around historic business district and declaring that for the overlay zone. And so for next steps, we're going to be meeting with the survey and inventory coordinator from the Historic Preservation Office of the Oregon Parks and Rec Department to see what kind of guidance he can provide. I did meet with him at the Oregon Main Street Conference in October and had a chat with him. And so he's somebody that has come out in the past to meet and talk with Robert Davis on behalf of the Yamhill Neighborhood Association. So in his research. But we're going to get some more information on how to kind of like just inventory and see what we have to work with in town. So that's next up there. Also, for the next steps with the technical assistance that's required to finalize the review, there will be some opportunities for grants to be applied for for technical assistance. And so we did discuss that. And then the next topic, we discussed the downtown tree installation strategy. And this was very exciting to think about how we can utilize trees to make just an immediate impact downtown. First step, though, the, in order to proceed with this, you know, or not to proceed, but to fully implement it, we definitely need to have the updated transportation plan integrated. So that's being worked on outside of the Economic Development Committee. But then Um outside of the Economic Development Committee. But then our mayor. Has a contact who has a list of trees, types of trees that would be good for planting downtown. You know, to use in streetscapes. So he's going to be getting um information about that. And then we're also discussing how to kind of plan ahead as we think about integrating trees. So again, not only how that fits with our transportation plan and. Saferoutes to schools and the crosswalks and and just making the the downtown a little more walkable, but also then. How to like on the technical side, um incorporate the electric water needs for. For this, also how to perhaps include hanging baskets in that as well. And then the third topic we discussed is the beautification micro projects that is uh. That's identified by both the Yam Hill Downtown Association and the Economic Development Committee as a, as a, a way to. Put together things that could be done easily without a big budget, without a grant, without a lot of um. Um effort and more with volunteer efforts. And so we have an initial one that's that's coming up on that. For the holiday season with some downtown storefronts being um worked on. And this is a led by the the YDA, but um. Yeah, improving some storefronts and getting kind of displays for the holiday season. Front and center. And then the idea is we start to collaborate with our downtown businesses and then we can hopefully. Work towards um next steps with them and um partnering on. Further development and improvements. And that is the report.
Thank you very much, Jenny. That was, it was a good, very good meeting. I'm excited about that. Makes some things started moving forward. Pretty cool. So moving on to council reports, so the mayor's reported pretty much is. Already given to the city administrators. I did not believe anybody has turned anything in for, yes?
I don't know.
Oh, I did. I would kind of thought I did.
Okay.
I meant to. Thank you, Jenny. Um, council reports, I don't believe anybody turned anything in for. Okay. Which moves us to unfinished business. Um the park fee ordinance that was tabled until the park master plan is complete. They, they, everybody got the email from AKS that that they sort of a progress update. Um, well, this one, I kind of thought that was supposed to be completed by now, but moving towards that direction, I guess, so. And then the lighting ordinance is also tabled for review with legislative updates. And so we'll be waiting to hear back from our planner. Walt Windowski on that.
Planning has a hearing scheduled, another hearing scheduled for um the seventeenth. For the um for the lighting ordinance. And after that, it will be most likely next month coming to council.
Perfect. It would be nice to have that off the agenda. Uh let's see, so then uh new business. So we're considering applicants for a planning commission for the twenty-six to twenty-eight term. There are three positions available, and last month there were four applicants. Now there are three. Uh Mr. King has removed his name. So Mary Gardner and Carol Pendergast are already have been seated. Uh but they, because of obviously they've been appointed, but their term expires. Uh they have altered, they, both of them have turned in application as well as Grant Warren, who is. Our person that applied in, I wanna say, May. And uh but at that point in time, he lived, like he lived outside of the city and that was not allowed. It will be allowed now. Um, so I guess the the best way to go about this would be to uh go sort of in order, um. So again, Mary and Carol are asking us to serve for the next term. Um and then Lynn Carl will not be, his term expires and does not want to. Serving again. He's like move going on to retire and travel, so he'll be out of town. And then, of course, we'll still have uh Ken and Sean, um who won't be, their terms won't be up until next year. So I, I think that we could just go, I, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, we can just go in order since there's three and three openings. And vote on Mary. One felt swoop.
One so.
One felt swoop. Do you, maybe we can have a vote to approve Mary, Carol and Grant. All to be appointed planning commissioners for the twenty-six to twenty-eight session.
I have a question.
Okay.
So on the guy that had applied. That lived within the city, did he indicate at all why he didn't wanna do this in?
He didn't. He he said that um some of his work plans have changed and he will be traveling these next few years, so.
Okay.
He doesn't feel like he can give all the attention he needs to to the planning.
Okay.
Obviously, that's a thoughtful reason to to stop.
No, I know.
You can.
I know there.
Take care of your business.
Somebody else did the same thing because of job requirements.
Yeah, and that's a real thing.
I know. Oh, I know.
I mean, you'd be surprised when there's something going on like a new subdivision, what kind of time it takes to be on planning.
Oh, I, I get it.
Commission, and there's a lot of reading.
Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, I've never been on the planning commission, but I'm sure that that is.
Seven pages, I believe it was, of wind shear um stats on the canopy for the gas station.
Really?
Yeah, and then people asked about it, so I was glad I read it. So anyway, do we want to uh have a all uh felt swoop vote for approving all applicants to the planning commission?
Yes, I'll make motion to appoint Carol Pendergrass, Mary Gardner and Grant Warren. To the planning commission for twenty twenty-six through twenty-eight term.
Wait a second.
I'll second this.
All right, let's have a vote.
And I, brothers and I.
S E I.
Karen I.
Oregon I. So it is unanimous. They are all going to serve. So that will obviously um. Carl Lynn will continue to serve through the end of December. And then uh at the first meeting, the way that they have it set up, uh Grant uh Warren would then be. Correct sworn in.
Sworn in in January.
Um as would the others to be sworn back in. Is that correct? Or do they just continue on?
Uh I believe they'd continue on if they changed positions or if it's been a while, then I do. Great master though.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for that. So moving on from there. So that we're gonna move on to the review of city contractors. So. From time to time, I think it's prudent to review our city contractors because. For example, our engineers, their contract was signed in twenty fourteen. I believe it has been reviewed at some level periodically, but I don't think it's been as a sort of a scrutinization of. Their work and performance over that period of time and also see what else is out there and what the pricing looks like. Um we had that kind of come up when our planning uh officially, when it, well, Walt Windowski. Contemplated and did briefly retire. Um it became much more expensive going with a different um contract planner. We were lucky to get him back. And I do think that we have, there's plenty of good reason to review all of our contractors. That would require a work session likely from council. Um, I have some, just a quick little thing here. Um. This was on a relatively small project that the city uh undertook. It took a long period of time, so it's twenty twenty-three until current. Um, but the the billing for some of this is conceptual drawings and details for new intake, permit review and. I can't say that word tonight. Coordination, that is listed and repeated on different bills, one, two, three, four. Four times. Joint Permit Application Coordination is listed one, two, three, four, five, six times. So I think at some point, right, reviewing what we're actually paying for and to make sure that over six months, we're not getting the same bill over and over. Um three hundred dollars at a time, four hundred dollars at a time, it's easy to miss, but that adds up. I mean, that's taxpayer money, so.
Do they ever get questioned as to why?
Well, I have to shed some light on that. Back in twenty-three, when we were gifted the money from the sub subdivision or the developer.
Well, gifted in the sense it was a requirement for approval.
We received bids, but the bids, the bids were astronomical. So it went above and beyond kind of our stretch is what we were. Got from a requirement from a developer. So we, we put that whole project to bed at that point because we were outside of our work window, our in-water work window with this project. Then revisited in twenty-four, got numbers back, but everything had to fall in line with that in-water work window, which is only open for three months. So yeah, we had a tight window to work with. That doesn't excuse the numbers that some of you are looking at, but yeah.
These, so councillors didn't have an opportunity to see all these numbers. Uh I would, I was unable to get this turned in in time to make the agenda. Um I literally was finishing this up like five forty-five today, so. Um, but I think going through this, I I think. It does create a situation where it would be nice to sit down in a work session where we can discuss this and that, get Jason's input. And make sure that we're actually spending taxpayer money in the wisest way possible.
It very easily could be like in June, they do the preliminary research and stuff, and then Jason and. Group comes back with some modifications or changes. And so July, it's documented the same way on our invoice, but they truly did different work, you know?
No, a hundred percent. I'm not accusing anybody of any impropriety or anything here. Just saying, when you see this all put together, cause none of this has ever been on the same page before.
Yeah.
But when you put it on the same page, it becomes a little bit glaring like what actually happened there, and maybe we could get some more details.
Yep.
So it could be as simple as asking for in the billing process, more detailed analysis of our bill.
Yeah.
Um and then always to make sure that you're not getting charged for asking billing questions. So billable hours are not billing questions. Yeah.
Uh so are you, with the work session, are you talking about focusing on this one?
I think that we should go over all of our contracts.
So that would, does that go beyond public works then?
I have not compiled a list of our contracts, uh contractors, but we, so we have a a person that would uh use a water treatment plant. Uh which we've cut back on as our guys have got their own certification. So there's a contract there that can be reviewed. We have the contract with the engineers. We do have a contract for the planning. Um and then I would imagine, so we have a contract with um I T, although we just approved that. Um but there's no reason not to just at least take a quick look at all to make sure everybody's. Satisfied, there's no questions, no adjustments that need to be made.
To add to that, I mean, the water plant in itself and wastewater has its own I T, you know, that, there's a lot of contracts out there that. I agree with Shay that you have to look at annually. Really kind of modify and see what's worth.
And then we can ask him about like any questions, right?
Yeah, so my thinking is, is that we could go through and we could do an analysis of each one and. Sort of get feedback from the people that actually work with them day in and day out. And if there needs to be a meeting or if there needs to be sort of a review, or if it needs to be where we go out and look to see who else is out there.
Yeah, I think I take it for what it is, but I think every year you guys should be writing RFPs to get new pricing in. Because, you know, once you get in those stagnant waters, we have these relationships for ten, eleven.
mysteriously start.
Yeah, we sit on our hands and then we're just, they just start taking advantage of that.
So yeah, I think the work session would be best to just kind of make these determinations then. And this is not. A decision that was made, this is just, I I think it's a good idea for us to sit down and and make the decision how we wanna proceed with these contracts and contractors. So uh maybe we can give us like a week to put together um a list and we can maybe at that point arrange. For a meeting sometime between now and the next council meeting. That works for everybody and we can kind of determine who should be invited and that sort of thing.
I think we. Are you gonna dress up as Santa?
I kind of dress up as Santa every day, brother.
Just to add to that, Shay, like we've, we've invited some of these contractors in to kind of. Relate their billing to the council. I mean, I know like typically it's been smaller pools of people, but. It's nice to have them come in and kind of explain why you see these upticks percentages. I mean, it. It's pretty alarming, cause from their end, you know, I mean, there's personnel that they're dealing with, you know, so on and so forth, so. No, I mean, I'm just putting that on the table. If you guys wanna invite some of these contractors at some point down the road. Kind of hear their thought pattern and why you're getting charged X.
No, a hundred percent. A lot of times when you sit down and just ask for the explanation, it's very clear and it's easy and it's, you know, clear as day. But again, you know, eleven years is kind of a long time to go without. Oh, you know, just making sure that we've got just the right folks. All right. Does anybody have anything on that? That's a good, a good plan?
Yeah.
Okay. That would move us then, if we're done there, on to the council rules. Uh our reporter's done an amazing job. I don't know if everybody looked through the uh. Council Rules section.
I did, and I have a question on it.
So I think the deal is on that is we'll have discussion, yes, and then um. That, that could also be potentially a work session as well, if there was.
Correct.
A lot. Um we might be able to tie those two together, maybe just too much to do with time, but. Um, yeah, go ahead, good question.
Okay, so on, I don't have my glasses. What page is it? On pages, I seriously, since my eyes come.
You're the blind guy, but that's eighteen.
Okay, so on page eighteen.
Yeah.
It is number three. And it is C. And it has to do with conflict of interest. And it's. I, I read this three different times and I wrote it out loud to myself and I still didn't get it. It doesn't make any sense. It just basically says that if you have a conflict of interest. And it requires a recusal.
With eighteen, page eighteen three?
Yeah, number three.
A call for a rec- recusal?
Yeah, so then it says that. You shall not participate in the proceeding unless the person's vote is necessary. To meet a requirement for a minimum number of votes necessary to take official action provided. However. That the member shall not participate in any discussion or debate on the issue of which the conflict arises. So if you have a conflict. You can't participate in any discussion, but you can vote on it if there's not enough people. And I'm gonna use a quorum. If there's not a quorum, or if there is a quorum and you're, you have a conflict. How do you not participate in the discussion, but you can still vote?
I think I can answer that.
What is it?
I believe it's because you've already announced your potential conflict or your conflict.
Okay.
Right? So that therefore it would be inappropriate to then try to sway others to your way of thinking that may benefit you.
But you can still vote.
But you can still vote because you've, but here's, this is the caveat, right? It would only be if that, if it was necessary to get, for example, like a land use issue. That it had to go in, right? Uh or you end up potentially, you can be seen.
Right.
Now, I have recused myself and all the way to the point for a vote where I've actually turned the meeting over to council president. Stepped away from my chair, sat in the gallery till the vote was complete and the discussion, and then returned back to the meeting. That would be the preferred method. That would be an extraordinary circumstance. I would think that you would also actually probably have. At my opinion, is like probably an hour with the lawyer before that meeting.
Yeah, well, like I say, I read that over three times. And then I read it out loud to myself and I thought, this does not make any sense.
Was that a fairly good grasp in your opinion?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I get that.
It's just weird.
It is weird.
I would be very uncomfortable about it myself.
Yeah, I, I mean, I really, I, I, yeah. So that's the only question. I, I mean, I really, I, I, yeah. So that's the only question I had on it.
If I, if I could just add, the, the point of the rules is to give you guidance on those type of situations that don't happen very often. And so it's not going to be very often that you have somebody who has a conflict of interest and you don't have a quorum and you're, because sometimes, I mean, the, the council could just pass it on to the next meeting if they want.
Or continued resolution or whatever it might be.
So that's, it's going to be a very specific situation and that's why they said the bare minimum.
Okay, okay. I, okay, I, I get that and I totally understand that.
But like, for example, in that situ, like you would know going into it likely.
Right.
And there would be probably a phone call to OGAQ, right?
Yeah.
Or in government ethics, and then probably to the lawyer and be like, and we would get advice because nobody wants anybody to be put in a situation where you might be, have done something incorrect.
Right. Especially, yeah, especially, yeah. No, no, I, I, I get it now after talking about it.
So kind of the plan there was, is that we could all have some time to look it over. And I was talking to our recorder today and we thought about maybe a week to ten days. Look it over, see if you find anything that's upsetting or you don't like or question that you might have, where we could make a decision at that point, whether or not it becomes a work session, or if it's something that we want to adopt. And that would give us time to take care of that by the next meeting. But we went from, I think it was three pages.
Three pages.
Of council rules that were pretty vague.
There's a lot there.
To thirty pages.
Yeah.
And this is based on the model rules from the League of Oregon Cities. Another thing that I was going to let you guys know, are, we're actually not in line with our charter on this currently because the rules are an ordinance. And per our charter, which was updated after the last time the rules were updated. So I assume that's why it's not in line. The rules were updated last in nineteen ninety-eight. The charter was updated in two thousand nine. It says the council rules will be adopted by resolution in our charter. And so we have to make sure that all of our rules are in line with our charter because that's our old version, our old.
So we would be then repealing.
We would have to repeal the language regarding the council rules out of the ordinance that is currently there. And then we would need to pass a resolution.
A resolution for the new.
Adopting the new rules.
So again, that's something that we could do. Yeah, we just, it does have to be noticed, right?
It would, yes, there would be a hearing and.
So yeah, if we can all just look those over and again, I mean, a lot of thanks to Angie for putting that together. It's a lot of hard work.
A lot of reading.
Right. And there might be, there might be something in there that we don't care for or what have you. So we can always have a word, so don't, I mean, don't let something get put into place that you don't like. I mean, it's seven twenty-five and we're talking about information and announcements. So Yamhill Christmas Tree Lighting, December fifth. I think there was a staff meeting on last Friday that discussed a little bit about that. Was that right?
We had a staff meeting. We are working in conjunction with the YDA and we have a meeting scheduled with them. So I can't say everything's set in stone right at this point. But it sounds like we're going to switch it up a little bit this year and instead of having everybody gather in the council room, they'll be going down downtown, looking at all the displays that Jenny talked about in her report. And then at the insurance building is where Santa will be and some cocoa. But I don't, I mean, other than that, I mean, they obviously want all the council to attend and volunteer for help if we're free getting came up for things that usually all happen at the last minute.
Is tree going to be over here again?
It is going to be over here this year and there has been discussions about moving it to other places in the future, but it's not for us to decide.
Sure, yeah. And then did, you know, I've got a book to read that night. Where are we doing that?
I think the plan, because that is tradition.
It's tradition.
We definitely, we, I think we're going to start with the meeting here, reading the book and then do the Christmas.
Here to the tree to the, okay, I love it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Halloween didn't turn out so well with that.
No, it hasn't rained the last two years.
Well, let's just keep hope that we keep going with that. Well, everybody, thank you so much. And Jason, thank you for staying to discuss with the contracts. That's important stuff. So I appreciate you taking your time to do that. Thank you, councillors, for going through all the information and so forth. It's, that's, we have a monthly meeting with the mayors and other tents in Yamhill County and a lot of the councillors don't read their packets.
I do.
I know, everybody does. I'm really super impressed. So we're doing pretty good, I think. All that to say, if we don't have anything else, we get a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn. Back in.
We're adjourned. What's the record?
Was the record for?